Let the record read that the entire, oops, the entire council minus Councilwoman Bodine is present. At this time, before we have the honor of saying the Pledge of Allegiance, I want to, you know, publicly make sure that people know that on June the 29th, Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00, we're having a celebration of Chuck Rutkey's life. And the reason that I chose this is because many times Chuck led us into Pledge of Allegiance. So I just thought it the appropriate time. So I guess with the spirit of Chuck Rutkey in mind, please join us all in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes have it? At this time, is there any public comment on any item on the agenda? During none. Approval of the minutes for the May 16 Town Council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes have it? Approval of the minutes for the May 16 Town Council closed session?
Oh, moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes have it? Approval of the minutes of June 12th informational work session?
Moved.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes have it? Approval of the minutes of June 12th informational work session?
Moved.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes have it? Approval of the minutes of June 12th informational work session?
Moved.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes have it? At this time, Town Administrators report, is there anything in particular that stands out highly you want to share with us?
I just want to highlight that we will start our first summer night series festival this Friday. Yes, tomorrow night. So this is a combination of vendors as well as activities at the center of town on Kellum's Field. There will be children's activities as well. And so this idea is brought forward by Councilman Vice President Fink and the Kellum's Revitalization Committee in terms of bringing activity to the center of town. So hopefully you'll join us, and that will be held every third Friday of the month for the summer. 6:00 PM.
If we have any questions of the Town Administrator, I'll start with the Council Vice President.
We did hold a pre-bid meeting, and we did have some good attendance there, mostly virtual, not as many in person. That was not a mandatory meeting, so we still may have bidders that respond that were not at that meeting, but if we had about nine in representation. And so we are working closely with the state. We issued clarifications based on that pre-bid meeting. Those are available on email and marketplace. So I would say it's moving forward well. Had a lot of interest in the street art RFP to date.
Have we had any update on that? You know, I may have been out walking that recently. And there are some old billy goat trails, and now because the school construction have been going on for so long, they've gotten less use, which just makes it harder to see where the trails are. So I'd love to get out there and walk with someone from the county.
Yes, so I have corresponded with county staff and sent them our preliminary alignment, which runs into East Street, and then also the potential alignment that would connect behind Beach Elementary, as we discussed. And so the goal would be that the county would include that in their trails plan. And so the county long-range planner has received that, and her goal is to incorporate that into the county trail plan.
And there's not a huge funding issue there, right? It's really just a resource issue.
It's the county resource issue in terms of weighing feasibility to bring us towards requesting funding.
Okay. Jumping ahead to Kellum's. So the permits are there. When do we anticipate that work actually starting for the storm drain? And how confident are we that we will not impact football season?
Very confident that football season will not be impacted. We do expect it to start mid-July, but it's only a one-week downtime. So they start in August. We're ramping up for football season, so it'll be good timing.
They do the whole thing in one week?
Yes.
That's amazing. Yeah, four years in one week.
Thank you, Peggy.
It will be very interesting to see the attendance on the first, third Friday. I am kind of curious about how the attendance has been. I just noted that where you had written the hours. I've been by the park several times. Occasionally, I've seen people, even went in there once myself and did a calisthenic or two. How's that been, attendance-wise? Do you know?
I would say it's growing. I think people are becoming aware that it's open. We've seen runners in there running the fields, heights, kids grabbing a ball and playing just for, you know, informal, unorganized activity. So I'd say it's definitely being used and appreciated.
So, and that's great. So I think everyone saw the public comment about the kids jumping off the railing at Fish and Creek. I actually saw them. I'll tell a short story about that, but I don't need to tell it now. Conceptually, if those kids had kayaks and paddleboards that they could launch or that the town was providing, that would have been a much better way for them to frolic in the creek. So I'm just wondering the status on that.
Close. We're close to deploying the kayak stands, yes.
Okay. It'd be neat to have some information about that at the third Friday, like if the town knows, if the town is going to have a booth or set up there, maybe have some information out. Just more ways to spread that word around. That's it. That's all I had. Good report.
Thank you. The Energy Audit, University of Maryland Environmental Finance Center. Any updates on, did we get, working with the staff to incorporate additional metrics? Did we hear anything from them?
Yes, working with the staff at University of Maryland Finance Center. I do not have the finalized report back yet.
Okay. Any idea when that might happen?
Hopefully very soon, the next 30 days.
My next question probably was more for Jay, but maybe it can be answered here. I know that there's underway right now, the county is conducting a flushing program of hydrants and water mains across the county. Do we have any idea whether that will impact our town?
No, it should not.
Okay. And I had a question, Josh, but it was answered in the Engineers' Report on the status of the headwork. So I saw that. On the water park, on the swim lessons that we're going to be holding, where are they going to be held?
The Aquatic Center.
Okay.
Calver County Aquatic Center.
Okay. And I don't know if we want to get into this now, but is there any update on the beach elementary tennis courts? I know there's been...
Later on the agenda.
We're going to, okay. And I think I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mars?
Yeah. I have a tangential question here about the Kellums. I had a discussion about a month ago about the signage up there and the age restrictions. Now, I guess we're encouraging kids to go down there and play, but I think that there was a rule, it was written, that if you were under 18, you had to be accompanied by a parent or something. That's still the case?
That is, yes.
So we have a bunch of 15- to 16-year-olds that just want to go down there and throw the ball around. They really can't do that, can they?
They should have an adult close by, yes. That's the goal.
Why is that a requirement?
That has always been the requirement at Kellum's. We can look at adjusting that, but I think that the goal is to have parental supervision if you're a minor.
Because that just dissuades kids. If you're hanging out with your kids, nobody's going to drag your parent down there to sit down there normally unless you need a ride, you know, to get down there. That's definitely something I'd like to have us look at because we're trying to encourage kids to get down there. Bravo to the Town Administrator. She's presenting at the MML Conference coming up, From Idea to Impact: Mastering Community Events. Bravo to that. Because you're our Town Administrator, I don't feel compelled to have to attend that one. I might be able to go to a different seminar, but bravo on that. The safe routes to school, you answered my question. We had about nine bidders. Walkability committee, we've got like a little matrix set up with some different projects. We probably kind of have our hands full, more or less, because there's probably a couple of things we're working on that really aren't in here. But I know there was a long list of connectors and sidewalks, varying short, long pieces that the committee had come up with some years back, set out a poll to the public, and they kind of prioritized them a little bit. And I was just wondering, of like the top six or seven of those projects, despite the other things we got going on, are we working towards maybe having those shovel ready and getting roadblocks out of the way so that, you know, when we're ready to kind of start keying that stuff up, they're closer to being ready to go?
No. What we're doing right now, what we're doing right now in the town is focusing on getting the big projects done that were in there. So the safe routes to school, which takes, you know, a chunk of time. And the pocket parks, although the pocket parks themselves were not one of them, access to view the bay was one of the top priorities, so that was the pocket parks. Now they're done, that's great. The sidewalk art wasn't one of them, came up later. People are way behind it, so that's what we're working on. Some of the top priorities that we wanted, we weren't allowed to do because it impinged on the state roads and their right of way. So a couple of those went by the wayside because we couldn't do them. But right now, we're really just trying to get through projects and not spend time planning new projects while the other projects stack up.
And I think maybe what I could do in my report moving forward is list all of those projects and then list their priority level and give you an idea where we are on each of them. So maybe that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'm just not linear thinking with it all. You know, there was a lot of stuff there, and, you know, it seems like a group of stuff we could have going concurrently to get them ready and figure out whatever the roadblocks are going to be and work on getting them out of the way short of sticking the shovel in the ground to advance all that stuff a little bit. Where are we with the Richfield Station water tower branding?
Close. We are looking at doing a piggyback contract with one of the county agreements.
When are we doing that?
Yes. We hope to have that back to you soon. Jay is reviewing those. They just, the county just entered into agreement, and so we want to make sure that we review that in full detail before we bring it to you for review.
The water treatment plant, had a couple of projects going over. I think maybe there's just one project that's ongoing right over there right now. And where are we with the projects going on over there? How are they doing? And just really in a nutshell.
For the capital improvement projects?
Yeah.
Josh, did you want to provide an update?
Yeah, I believe what he's speaking about is the headworks improvement project. The most recent work on that was the geotechnical survey, and we just got the report back today, which was letting us know whether or not it was going to kind of drive which direction this project was going to go. Just general overview, they have said that the installation of a wet well is feasible, and they gave recommendations for what could be done to ensure that there was no issue with any of the structures nearby, such as clarifier number one. That information, from what I know, McCrone has forwarded over to a sheeting and shoring contractor to get pricing back for what the cost would be for the sheeting and shoring and de-watering needed for that work. And that's kind of the next step we're at now.
So promising.
Yes. At least they didn't come back and say, yeah, you can't put a wet well there. And then we would have completely put the project right back to square one.
Okay. That's money well spent. I know we're still working on that. A comment under Future Projects, and there's a note in here about conducting a review and updating of plant standard operating procedures. I've been watching a lot of YouTube, taking a lot of deep dives in YouTube, and my son is fixated with Boeing and all the issues they've been having with the planes and stuff. And one thing that I've noticed in some of the series that I've been watching, that I guess the airlines do this, and made it similar to what you all have down there, standard operating procedures. If this disaster or this emergency happens, here's the checklist, you know, and these are the steps that, you know, we've come up with, that we do. I imagine those are what your standard operating procedures are. And I was impressed with that because any number of emergencies can happen in the cockpit during a plane. I was surprised how many things would really go wrong on the plane. My wife didn't want to hear about it. But, you know, I'm just encouraged to make sure that, you know, we run through those protocols, we know what we are, we're reviewing them, sometimes, you know, doing dry runs just as practice, pulling them out, you know, to run through is an excellent thing. The Kellum's Field, I see the youth baseball, they're playing there four nights a week?
Yes. Sometimes five.
Making up for days and calling by.
Isn't that great?
Well, baseball goes into late summer?
As, yes, they expect to be, yes, there will not be any overlap. They expect to wrap up at the end of this month.
On the permit activity, I see we've got one permit approved to remove the tree. Well, it was applied for to remove the tree, and it looks like it has tree board approval. There's one of these on here that says remove 10 trees. Is that tree board looking at that, I guess, in any capacity? I'm just curious.
For 402112th Street, that did not require tree board approval because of the size and location.
Well, that's interesting. So, but they reached out?
Yes, we do require a permit, and that allows us the opportunity to review the parcel of land where it's located and whether it's on a steep slope and whether or not the tree board needs to review.
Review is good news for them. Thank you.
You know, before I go to, you know, Keith, baseball, back when Patrick was playing, I remember it was, you know, as long as you keep on winning, you keep on playing. You know, the tournament goes on and on. And the old joke was after the fourth, the parents were rooting for the other teams to win. Almost always. Keith?
All right, thank you. All my questions have been asked and answered. I just want to observe that tomorrow night is the first summer nights at Kellum Field, so look forward to that. Thanks.
Just a couple of things. The presentation you're going to do at MML, if there's a way for us to see a link of that, I'd love to watch that. I'm not at MML this year, so I'd love to see it otherwise. Thanks. And then on page five, the water treatment plant, I appreciate the pictures you added into the report. That makes it much easier to understand what you're talking about for those of us who, you know, aren't Larry. Yeah, which is a bunch of us. And also, excellent measurable improvement from your covers to the clarifiers, and thank you for reporting that. Hey. I love the idea for the kayaks, but maybe we could post a QR code with kayak safety that would point to that. I had a couple of sites I'd looked at, and so they say, you know, things to do in your kayak, things not to do in your kayak, and stuff like that. So maybe we could post a few of those. You have to be careful though, because some of them tell you practice rolling your kayak, which you may or may not want people doing. It's up to you, but since it's not their kayak. But it just might be something for us to put up at the launch sites, a QR code saying, here's, if you have never been on a kayak, here's some safety for you.
We're going to do that and bay conditions as well.
Great. Great, great. And then on page 25, I like that format of the calendar that's been displayed with each of the months with the lineup, a couple of months and a couple of lineups of what's going on. I found that very easy to read and see in advance what's going on. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer's report, which we've read. If we have any questions, I'll begin with Councilwoman Hartman.
I have no questions. Thank you for the report.
No questions here. Thank you.
No questions from me. Sure.
Continue to look forward to spending our $3.582 million sometime soon. Thank you.
Sure.
No additional comments as usual. Good report. And yeah, I'm kind of curious to see if there's more to report on once the audit starts.
Not really.
Yeah?
Not, not really.
Just the results? Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Town Engineers' Report, we've read Wayne's report. Wayne's not here, but if we have any questions, we can get you answers. Mr. Vice President?
The only question I had was the same question I asked, I think Holly's already answered, which is when, when will they start the pipe and how soon will it take? And I think you've answered that, so nothing else.
Couple of questions. Do we have any idea on the heritage project? Any idea on the schedule to close this out? It's been on here for quite a while.
Yes, we're close. There was a meeting this month related to some of the closeout items, but they have not provided all of the ideas. But that will be before Town Council, once we wrap everything up with a final report for you to review.
Okay. And as I mentioned before, I saw here in the report on the headworks project that, as Josh just said, we just received the geotech report, and I presume we're moving forward with the design now?
That is what they're doing, from what I understand. They got to get the information back for the de-watering and the sheeting shore, and then that'll allow them to continue with the project.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mars?
Nothing from me. Thank you. No questions.
No questions. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you, Brittany. Calver County Sheriff Deputy's Report, we've got the... new fellow up here. We know his father very, very well. Very well. If you don't mind, please introduce yourself, because we just like your last name. It is funny. Thanks for your questions here. If we have any questions, I'll begin with Councilwoman Hartman.
Welcome to the beaches. I don't have questions on the report, but since you mentioned the speeding potential in Richfield Station, are we looking, having, had any chance to look at putting speed bumps in there since it's a town road or once it's a town road? Does it have to be turned over first?
It is a town road, so we are looking at that as an option, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Stay safe.
Welcome. I don't have any questions on the report, so thank you.
Said he had 36 stops in the last month. He said there were 12. Okay. Any fines? Speed tickets given? Are they all warnings or? Just following along with what, we know that the town has worked hard in the past trying to slow stuff down at Richfield Station. So we're trying to get our news to the grindstone again to come up with something that's like a permanent deterrent of some sort, so we're all definitely following. Thank you.
Stay safe, brother.
No questions. Stay safe, and thank you for your service.
I do have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. One thing I just want to note quickly, and, you know, we own the road, speed platforms or even bollards or something that closes the road, which they've done in other parts of Richfield Station, is something else I'd like to see us consider. I've never been a big fan of speed bumps, but I recognize it may be necessary in this case, and I respect that. I don't live there, so, but there are other ways to narrow the road and have plantings that look nice, and they've done that in other streets in Richfield Station. So I just would like us to consider all those options. So in your report specifically, I circled a bunch of these different things that happened. We had a couple of assaults, thefts out of cars, theft of a motor vehicle. I'm wondering if the people, and maybe you can't talk to this, are these town residents? So you, for example, in the theft of, obviously the victims are town residents, but suspects apprehended for the thefts in the cars in Chesapeake Village, are they, are they town residents? Yep. So I was chatting, well, to make a long story short, there is a rep that Calver County has that, you know, don't come here to commit crimes. And in fact, we were talking about this kind of remarkable story where there was something that happened in Prince Frederick, and they had cameras in pursuit, and they had just an officer pull out somewhere further north on Route 4 and, you know, a mile ahead of the car. It was artful, and I think that's awesome, so keep up the good work and stay safe.
Mr. Mayor, one follow-up, please.
I've lived at Richfield Station 25 years. I'd never noticed that there wasn't a speed limit sign hitting down that road coming out on Harrison. I just wanted to mention that. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Hang around. North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, Councilman, you have anything to share?
Just one thing. Work is progressing on planning for celebrating the department's 100th anniversary in 2026, so keep you all posted on what we plan to do for that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Mayor's Report.
I hope everyone enjoyed their Juneteenth holiday. If you don't know the full meaning of the holiday, I suggest that you do a little bit of research. It's very interesting. The day before, on June 18th, this Tuesday, the world said goodbye to Willie Mays, the greatest baseball player I ever saw, with props to Michael Jacksmith, Hank Aaron, and Ernie Banks. Willie was a pioneer. My favorite Willie Mays quote is, "Every time I look at my pocketbook, I see Jackie Robinson." And baseball historians all understand what he meant by that. Still with Willie here. Growing up, you know, families, we all know families, you know, especially large ones, but all families have, you know, funny traditions that are, you know, funny to them, maybe not outsiders. And my family was no exception. Willie Mays and my mother, who's name was Babe, which is kind of interesting when the two greatest players were Willie Mays and Babe. Willie Mays and my mom, Babe, she had the same birthday, May 6th. So every year, we sing happy birthday to Mom, and we also sang happy birthday to Willie Mays. Mom loved it, you know, we had a house full of boys, and, you know, if they're going to sing about a baseball player, that was, that was fine. May 6th will never be the same for us now that they are both gone and they're with the See a letter, say hey, kid. This past week has been very humbling for me. Scores of citizens have stopped me in the store, sent me emails, you know, called me to thank me for my service, for fighting to protect and preserve our quality of life. To be clear, your main concern is that the town moves forward, not backwards. And I left all this with just sharing with everybody that, you know, rest assured, the silent majority is well and alive in Chesapeake Beach. Thank you. Next, Introduce Ordinance 0-24-10. In order to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, to amend the language of the election code to quantify how the town validates petitions for referendum. I'll set the public hearing for July 18th at 6:50 PM. Next, Introduce Ordinance 0-24-11. In order to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, to amend the language of the election code to clarify how the Board of Elections will offer assistance to voters with disabilities. Set the public hearing for... offer assistance to voters with disabilities. Set the public hearing for July 18 at 6:53 p.m. Next, Introduce Ordinance 0-24-12. An ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach to add language to the election code to establish campaign financing regulations. Set that public hearing for July 18 at 6:57 p.m. Thank you. So as, as we all know, you know, you know Randy, who is the Chair of, of our Board of Elections, and Todd, and Holly, and members of the councils, have been, you know, working to, you know, fine tune, you know, this particular ordinance that is needed, obviously. And unfortunately, Randy won't be here on the 18th to give us a overview, to give the council an, an overview, but he has agreed to give us that now. So I know you spoke to us a week ago, Randy, and if you just don't mind, you know, you know, closing the loop, if you don't, if you will. Yeah, I, I think the first two are fine. I think the campaign finance, you know, and you, you're probably on a cruise boat somewhere next, next month, so I'm not even going to ask you what you're doing there. Ah, that's a new one. Okay. Hope it didn't catch on.
Now it's on. Okay. Let's see if I can find the right one here. Okay, this all, this all started because I, I had, I had a candidate ask me about banking, checking accounts. And, and, and I told him, you know, we don't have a campaign ordinance, but I believe you have to report it, any, any contributions, or that you would have to report via the ethics. But, and so, being the way I am, I did more research. I got with ethics and asked them questions, and they got with their lawyer, and, and, and it, it turns out that most counties, districts, they, they have a separate campaign finance. And, and ethics doesn't, you know, ethics doesn't cover campaign contribution gifts. And, and I mean, the way our ordinance is written, the way the ethics code is written, you would think it does. And, and in reality, I believe every candidate since 2013, when, or 2016, when I've been running the, the elections, the candidates all, all basically did not take contributions, because they felt that the gift, any contributions was a gift, and that they would have to report it under ethics. So I think that's basically what's been going on. And, and so I just brought this to the attention of Holly, and then being, being the person she is, she did a lot of research. And I also handed over the folder that Malcolm Fun and Ron Draper had given me. And this had come before the council multiple, two different times, I guess in 2013 and 2016. But it wasn't passed, it just went to the side. So I took that, brought something, a modification of that to the work session, and then at the work session, you asked me to make it less complicated, to, to bring it down to just the mirror, get something in there, get, get, get it started. And so that's what I attempted to do here. Do you have any real questions on, on the, the code? I've answered some of you already.
I'll begin with Mr. Vice President.
I, I have no questions. I think you did a fantastic job. You heard everything that we said, and you came up with an ordinance that's simple and clear, and I think you did an excellent job for whatever that's worth.
I agree with him.
Yeah, thanks for moving on so quickly. I don't have any questions. Good job.
Yeah, I appreciate it. You did answer a couple of my questions prior to the meeting, so I.
Excellent simplification. And also answered the questions from the prior two, where the council had asked for suggestions. I do have a question for Holly. Will Todd look at this?
He has looked at it, yes.
And everything is copacetic?
Yes.
Participated together.
Oh.
So, a, actually, after the, the work session, I wrote it that night, but he wrote one that night, too. He had a real simple version. I had a semi-simple version. We combined those two versions, and that's what you got.
Well, well done. Thank you.
The, the one key thing that, one of my main goals, and it's also a direction that I got from the council during the work session, was to make sure that we did not make this so complicated, so, so that people that would run for Town Council were just backed away because they have to do this financial report. But we've made it very clear in here, that if they don't accept any contributions, if it's their own personal money that they're putting on it, they do not have to file a report.
You know, Randy, one time Senator Mike Miller was talking about this, you know, subject matter, you know, and it was all about contributions and signs, and he went like that. He says, he says, if I had, no, I think he said, if I was king, because he already was, he already ran the state, you know, if I was king, he, he said, there'd be no contributions. And you'd be allowed one sign per candidate, and it had to be in front of your house. And of course, you know, the sign industry wasn't happy, but everybody had a good laugh on that one. Thank you, Randy.
Hope that helps. Thanks.
Indeed.
I don't know how to turn it off.
Yes. Planning and zoning, and nothing to report. Order of Appeals, the, the hearing, you know, just going on and on. A continuation hearing is scheduled for August the 19th. There was a report. Okay, I didn't look at that. Did, did you want to say something about the report? The council received a planning and zoning report.
If.
I'm kind of backtracking here, guys, sorry.
Sorry. If there's a question on it, should we just write to Kathleen?
Or you can send it to me, whichever is easier.
Okay, thanks.
All right, very good. Sea Box, nothing to add. Climate change, sir?
Yes, sir. So as discussed in the Town Administrator Report, our town continues to work with the University of Maryland Partnership for Action, Learning, and Sustainability, called PALS, led by Dr. Peter May. This group recently posted video presentations by five students, in which they discuss possible remediation and flood protection measures for the marsh area between Horizons on the Bay and Seagate communities. Our town continues to have discussions with the firm of Mahan-Rykel Associates regarding hiring their firm to assist with investigating coastal resiliency plans for various areas in our town, and specifically the Kellums Field Site. We also continue to coordinate with the Coastal Resiliency Steering Committee Chair Jeff Foltz to schedule the next meeting of the Steering Committee. Stay tuned. And finally, Town Administrator Holly Wall and I will hopefully meet with DNR and MDE at the upcoming Maryland Municipal League Conference to discuss options to resume proper operation of the floodgate located on, in the marsh area between Horizons on the Bay and the Seagate communities. There's a lot involved in that, and we need to work closely with both MDE and DNR on that. Co-Chair Keith, anything to add?
No, excellent report. Thank you.
Any, any questions?
EDC, Larry.
On that note, our town continues to work Calver County Tourism Roundtable to promote tourism in our town and the Twin Beaches. And one of the issues will be the Summer Fest tomorrow night. Planning continues. Scheduled numerous events across the county to celebrate our nation's 250th anniversary in 2026. And as I mentioned before, that year also will mark the 100th anniversary of our fire department. Also, interesting to note, our town celebrated 130 years since first incorporated on April 3, 1894. 130 years. So happy birthday to our town on a belated note. Town Administrator Holly Wall continues to reach out to the Twin Beaches Business Alliance to promote coordination with that group, and will continue to provide updates as we learn more. And planning is well underway for our annual Taste the Beaches event, scheduled for Saturday, September 21. This year's event will be held at Bia Coastal Italian Kitchen and Wine Bar. Mark your calendars. And just a reminder that Mayor Mahoney is responsible for ensuring we have good weather for our event.
And I got that.
Any questions?
Well, only a comment on that, Larry. If you remember last year at the Taste of the Beaches, it rained everywhere in Calver County except Abner's Restaurant.
Keep up the good work.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working hard at it.
Great.
The street art project that's adjacent to that, the street art project that's adjacent to that venue, are we targeting to have that complete time for Taste Beaches?
It's possibly, yes. As part of the proposal is.
That'd be great.
It would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. I'm done.
Okay, very good. Green Team, we've read Councilwoman Bodine's report. Obviously, if we have any questions, we know how to get ahold of her. Kellums Revitalization Committee, Vice President Fink, anything to report?
Nothing new to report, but it's very exciting to get this drainpipe finished.
Good. Twin Beaches Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition, Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, planning continues for the Glow Vigil that's scheduled for August 31, 7:30 to 9:00 p.m. in North Beach, at the Mark Fraser Sunrise Garden. And as I've announced before, and I will say it again, so we'll be doing the unveiling of the sculpture by Thomas Sterner, Big Hug and Hug Chair, at this event. And we will have some guest speakers. I believe it's being advertised on the town's website and email blast this year. And, and we'll have resource providers there as well, from the Alcoholics Anonymous, from the Calvert Alliance Against Substance Abuse, from the Calvert County Health Department, who will be providing Narcan Training, Calvert County Local Behavioral Health Authority, Celebrate Recovery, and Narcotics Anonymous. All be there. This year's theme is Their Lives Matter, Remembering and Spreading Hope. And, and again, as I said, a public, this is, was funded by the Maryland State Arts Council, so they provided a grant of $30,000, $25,000. And then an anonymous donor provided another $5,000 for the sculpture. And so hope to see you all there. Our meeting, we held that on June 13. Our next meeting will be the second Thursday of August.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
New unfinished business, new business. The Town Council to consider authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Emerald FX in the amount of $40,000 from the Water Park Capital Improvement Light Item to complete the conceptual design work and to generate a concept plan with budgetary numbers for improvements to the town-owned aquatic facility for the Town Council to review. Do you have an overview, Holly?
Yes, thank you. We have started some additional geotech work. Killis and Carnes was on site this week. So this award would be to further bring forward the designs for Town Council and the public to review as we move forward. And then we would go to permit, construction drawings and permitting as well.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve?
We'll do approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any, any questions? I'll begin with the Council Vice President.
No questions. We've covered this quite well in work sessions. It's a major next step. I applaud the effort. And let's vote quickly, so we can move quickly.
Agree, thanks.
No comments.
I just have a question on the $40,000. So is that less than what they had said they would do for $66,000?
Correct. We're going to break it into two phases, and then bring that back to council to decide on that second phase, which would close out the work.
Great.
All in favor, C.I.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Next, Town Council to consider authorizing the mayor to approve a change order with Evergreen disposal to provide a managed recycling program for town residents with the total cost of $1.15 per month, per household, from the General Fund Trash Removal Service line item. Anything you want to share between now?
Sure. So Town Council had expressed some concern about some of the locations that maybe cannot accommodate a large container. However, I have spoken with the contractor, and we will work through those issues on a case-by-case basis. So the majority of the town will receive the large 96-gallon recycling container that will be insured and managed by Evergreen. So every resident will get a new container. If it breaks, they will replace it.
I mean, you know, recycling is just something that everybody just loves to do, you know, and it, and it's great. So anyhow, we have any questions? Councilwoman Hartman?
Remind me again, so where we are, our recycled bins are these big blue tubs. What will happen to those?
So we, we can receive credits for those, so we could collect those and return those back to Rehag as the vendor, and they will give us a, a credit.
Fantastic. Okay.
So, so that is good news that they're going to work with us. Does that, does that mean the price that we are agreeing on tonight will be, will be the final price, even though you're going to be working out some of these smaller bins, and it may take more manual labor for them to collect that?
Yes, the price would not exceed what is here. We would expect it would be a little less, because some of our town-owned properties are, are not using one-for-one recycling containers or using a corral. For example, Seagate has a corral with several recycling containers that all are shared. So this is, this is the worst-case scenario. We do not believe it'll be this amount due to some special circumstances at individual locations.
And so.
It does not include any credit received. So that would, that would be taken off separately, as that would come from the contractor, not from Evergreen.
And so there are townhomes as well, where they don't have that corral, and they just have to keep it somewhere on their property, and then, you know, pull it around to the front of their town.
Correct.
So that, that, and that, that would be included as well. I mean, we're talking about that, as well as the corrals and everything.
Correct, yes. And we'll just work with each individual location with a, a solution that meets their needs.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Morris?
Yeah, definitely. Still on the fence with this. Not really sure. After the work session, we talked about it a little bit. I mean, I, I still have some questions, like what happens if we enter into this agreement and we change contractors?
So this was, then we would have the opportunity to use that service through the new contractor or in the service.
This is a separate independent service?
It is a, so when we put out the RFP for services, we asked for this as an alternative item. So it would go along with the trash contract. So when we go out to bid for new services, we would, again, ask for that service from the new vendor, and then the Town Council can decide if they want to continue it or not. So that, to answer it, so the, the next vendor would provide the service, if that was what the Town Council approved.
Kind of picking up the mantle where the last contractor left off, I guess?
Yes.
I see pluses to it. And we know that having the discussion, regardless of where it goes, is important for the, I think on behalf of the, the service provider. We know that instituting the change will help with onsite, with efficiency of onsite collection. Just got some question marks over it still.
I'm, before I go, I go this way, I just want to say that, you know, this is just a, another one of many, you know, amenities that we give our, our people. And I'm all about that.
As sort of echoing Councilmember Hartman, we are going to need to work with some of the HOAs. It's going to be a challenge in some instances, and, and how we're going to locate that. So I'm sure we can work it out. Thank you.
I, you know, ultimately, I'll, I'll support this, because I think it's, it's kind of an evolutionary step. But I do echo some of Councilwoman Morris's concerns. And I'm kind of curious, Holly, if, if there's a notion here that because we're, we're doing this with Evergreen, and conceptually we change contractors, whatever, but we, we would, we would have the ability to pick up where we left off or not. Would we have the ability to evaluate this a year from now and say, man, this was a bust?
Yep, absolutely.
So I, I would like to request that we do that, that we, we give that an honest review a year from now, assuming this passes. You know, one of the things that really sways me is what I heard from Jay. Anything that, that frees up his team, his money and time well spent. So I just want to make sure that a year from now, we, we don't just sign this again, that we just pause long enough to sort of say, yeah, this worked out great, or maybe it didn't. The only other thing, a question I have is, so Evergreen is doing both of these services. So they're going to essentially, for, for places where there are corrals, they're going to. take a little bit more ownership of the bins because they're responsible for them.
Right.
I think that's a huge plus because if it's not, you know, Bob's bin or Jane's bin in their house, but in these corral bins, those areas, I know from personal experience, get to be a mess. And maybe this is an opportunity where they won't be quite such a mess because contractor has a little bit of skin in the game, because they're going to replace these if they don't take care of them. So, sorry for rambling there. You know, I support this, but I want to make sure we review it as we go. Thank you.
I think it's a great idea, looking at it again in one year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Follow-up comment, please?
Thank you.
Going back to the existing bins, we've rolled this out. Well, I mean, some of them are town-issued. I guess we would just plan on collecting those and getting some kind of credit for them. What about the ones that are owned personally by the homeowner?
They would be, they could keep their own bins. We obviously, we wouldn't collect any personal bins.
All things considered with this program, I know we considered this like a year ago as well, we kind of kicked it around. All things considered, you feel that this is a good program?
I do, because we don't have the economies of scale. And so we're not able to, by purchasing 100 a year as we're budgeting, we're spending $2,000 in freight just to get them. So unless we're buying them in volumes and we're not able to keep up with the demand. So residents want these new clean containers that are, you know, ready to go and they can put the recycling in it and they can count on it. So I think it's a very good commercial quality. And I think it allows us to provide additional services to residents by having those available, and they can count on having a clean container that's insured and will be replaced if there is an issue. And we do not have to purchase 2,500 containers at once and store them at Public Works and divvy them out on a case-by-case basis. So yes.
Thank you for that.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it? That was Larry's job. Thank you, Travis. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Town council to... It's this beginning, huh? Watch for my comebacks. I'm not willing votes. The town council to consider authorizing a contract with Tyler Technologies for code enforcement and permitting software, and permitting software. These costs would come from the general fund budget, software maintenance agreement line item in the amount of $16,010 for annual software fees, and the general fund capital improvement line item for upfront software expenses of $15,330. I know we were just at the work session, I don't think there was any questions that have not been answered. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it? Let me switch it up a little bit here and get this last vote out of the way. Town council to consider authorizing the mayor to enter contract with Barbicane Thornton and Company in the amount of $28,750 annually, with a $27,750 annual increase for three years, with two one-year options to renew for financial audit services, including single audit as needed. We discussed this in last week. Before we discuss it, is there a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Any discussion? I would... All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it? Okay. The town council to review the MOU with the Board of Education and the updated cost estimates for the required repairs that the town is expected to cover at 100% to make improvements to a BOE-owned asset. And on BOE property, I think Holly has some up-to-date information to share, so we'll...
Yes. So we became aware this week that the Board of Education also has an MOU with Calvert County Parks and Recreation for all internal and external assets, recreational assets within elementary schools, middle schools, and I believe high schools as well. Definitely certain for elementary and middle schools. And so the concern at this point is what conflicts there may be between this MOU between the Board of Education and Calvert County Parks and Rec, because the restrictions within that MOU are the same timeframes as what's within the BOE and town MOU. So nights, weekends, holiday use as well. So the recommendation is that we take some time and understand that agreement and how that impacts any agreement the town council would enter with the Board of Education and bring that back to town council once we have a full understanding.
Okay. I know, I'm sure the Vice President wants to weigh in. You've been...
Well, we've been talking about this, Holly and I have been, and Councilman Morris, to be fair, have been back and forth with this. And it's just kind of one discovery after another. I think the other point I want to note here is that the bid that came back exceeds the high end of the bid that we had gotten. I understand why they're saying that. I was over, kind of walking around the tennis courts and also taking pictures of the signage. And I understand why they're saying that, but I just want people to recognize, you know, it's not responsible for us to just take what is a huge sum of money for courts that now have three competing interests, not just two, and not have other entities help to bear that responsibility. Now the county is involved. And as Holly pointed out, at some point, they may decide they want to hold X event there, you know, pickleball tournament. I'm making that up, I have no idea. And they would have the authority to do that, and our residents wouldn't be able to use the courts unless they were participating in that particular activity. So we want to get this done. We want that amenity for the town. But that's $250,000 that could be spent on other amenities that we actually have control over. I'll stop there, kind of on a rant, so I hope that that message is clear, makes sense.
Somewhat the same concerns. I do believe that this is a facility that the town should take over, like we have Kellum's. But there just seems to be too many hands in the pot here. And to relieve the county and Parks and Rec and the Board of Education of any financial responsibilities while maintaining their control just seems a problem to me, all I'll say.
Yeah, I find it, you know, disturbing, unfortunate, and, you know, sad that, you know, a couple of years ago when we were working with the, you know, BOE, with the new school, and, you know, working them through it, there was a lot of things that were involved there. And I think I joined their committee as sort of a neighborhood liaison, and that's what they wanted, you know, from us. And, you know, I was asked, hey, what are your thoughts on the tennis court staying and your residents being allowed to, you know, use it? And I was elated. I was like, well, that's teamwork, you know? Thanks for thinking of that, you know? And I was thinking along the same terms of when the commissioners, you know, negotiated a really hard deal and gave the town Kellum's Field for $0. So I was happy. And now to be here at this point in time, for one, to find out that there's another MOU that's already been in place for, you know, two years now that we didn't even know about or even, you know, told about, you know, that's disturbing. And I'm equally disturbed that the, you know, that Parks and Rec would just come out and, you know, close it up, you know, the way they did without, you know, letting us know. So I have a feeling that, you know, it's just too many, as Larry said, you know, there's just too many hands in the pot and people doing things and not, you know, and this is where, you know, they need to keep in touch with the town. And I'm glad Holly doesn't waste a minute and reaches out to them and, you know, lets them know. And hopefully we'll come to a resolution so where this asset stays with our people who'd like to, you know, recreate there, because I'm in full support of that activity. So, yes.
So just to clarify, we had a lot of back-and-forth information this week about Calvert County Parks and Rec closing the courts or the Board of Education and not getting clear answers. But to confirm, the Board of Education did confirm with me that they were the ones that actually closed the courts off, and that was due to safety concerns. When I contacted the school, they had thought Calvert County Parks and Rec had closed it. But the information I have received is Board of Education closed it.
Okay, then I absolve and retract any remarks for, you know, Parks and Rec. And thank you, Holly. Appreciate your work on that. And we're still working. I know we're reaching out to the Commissioner's office on this just to see, you know, where we can go. And it just seems unfortunate that, you know, this didn't happen in the middle of winter, you know? But, okay. Councilman Morris?
Thank you. The matter fell off our radar for a little while there, but, I mean, I believe that something's going to get worked out. The courts are going to stay. They say why? Why is there suddenly a safety concern at those courts?
It was a statement was, the cracking is pretty significant, and I believe that might be due to the fact that they just installed a sidewalk leading up to the area as part of the, some of the finalization of construction. And that work, my understanding, has created some additional cracking.
Of the court itself. Interesting. So we've got the sidewalks to the courts complete. Well, we're here to support Board of Education. I said this during the work session, and we all know we're, there's been some, the budget cuts that the state has enforced on all of the counties, frankly, has put a lot of the BOEs behind a eight-ball there. So we're definitely here to support and partnering with them, and we have been. I'm looking for some support and help from the county commissioners. I have reached out to Commissioner Grasso and Commissioner Ireland. Commissioner Ireland is at large. This is Catherine's first, this is her district. Her district's not just Chesapeake Beach. We've got North Beach, Summer City, Breezy Point, Owings, North County, not to mention Calvert Parks and Rec now, who, it's county facility, and they should be able to roll some things in. And I don't really have a problem with that. I have a problem with paying for all of the improvements, though, because, you know, when that should be shared, I think, from the district a little. So there's some stuff happening in the back scenes, and I hope something's going to break through there. We're definitely want to be in lockstep with BOE, but with the county commissioners as well. You know, obviously, we're going to need some multiple bids if we're going to be stepping up to the plate, paying some money for things. So, you know, I don't hold the revised bid we got from ATCU, whoever, that's just one person. And I would say that I would encourage, actually, who's going to lead the charge? I would say we want them to lead the charge. We want them to get the multiple bids. We want them to vet the contractors. We want them to manage all of that. Ask it, we don't?
No, I don't believe, that is not how it's written. The town would need to bid that out. The town would need to approve that expenditure, and we would need to run the project with their permission, is the way it's written.
So we would do all of that, and then basically for them, because they own it all, and they will continue to own it all, which is part of the problem that we have in perpetuity. Because they're going to own it all, and all of these other community areas of the community need that, and they have depended on that. And let's not forget, I know that the children of that school are going to be the primary beneficiaries of that area. I know that I'd seen pictures online of their dance that they held recently, and they held it on the playground. And I'm not ridiculing that at all. I mean, any, these events at the elementary school, they're all wonderful, and they're all great experiences for the kids. But I personally DJed many a dance there at that very tennis court. And they've been super well, that they were always super well-attended, lots of parents and people getting out. And plus, it's fenced in, so there's one way and one out, so it was kind of an easy way to manage, you know, something that was out there. So, you know, I've encouraged friends and other residents, I'm to reach out to their county commissioner, to Commissioner Grasso in particular, but, you know, we definitely need a little help from the county on this. It's a little unfair to expect the town to do the entire lifting of that, that's all. I do believe we're going to figure that out, we're going to figure it out.
Yeah, thank you. So one, I certainly support investigating this further. I had my reservations to begin with. I think I mentioned at our work session, I had some concerns about the Calvert County Park and Rec, so I'm really happy the administration followed up on that and found out a bunch of stuff I had no idea about. So that's great. I also think, I kind of go back and forth about this a little bit in terms of, you know, what the town should pay, what they should pay, but I definitely don't think the town should be paying for everything, which is the way it's currently written. I agree that I don't think that's fair. We only get limited use. We should be paying for our fair share of this.
To echo the previous council members, I am a little disappointed that, how much time and money we've spent on this ourselves, only to find out somebody else was already supposed to be doing it. Because it's my understanding, the MOU with the county says they will maintain these courts, like we were supposed to maintain these courts. And to Councilman Morris's comment about they should do the lifting, well, the county has the primary MOU who said they were going to take care of the courts. So maybe they do have a share of that. And it's also my understanding that we do pay taxes. I know we pay taxes to Calvert County, and I know our town pays taxes and our businesses pay taxes for rec. So I think the county ought to pay some back and work on those courts. Thank you.
I agree.
May I, Mr. Mayor, add one thing? So I just want to make one point. Everyone here kind of brought this home. We didn't lock the tennis courts, the Board of Education did. If we had this MOU in place, could we take that tape down?
Likely not.
Well, so basically, they want us to... Okay, enough said.
Yeah.
For a minute.
You're getting your Irish up over there.
I'm getting my Italian up. Okay.
Okay, very good. At this time, is there anybody in the public that has any comments? Please. Good to see you again. You did.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for everything you do, and I, for one, am going to be very sad to see you go, as so many people are. Thank you for everything you've done for all these years. We're very appreciative. So I just came to reiterate some things. I have joined the new Richfield Station website, Homeowners Association on Facebook, just, you know, for the neighborly thing. And I've seen even more people. I've asked people to come up for the meetings as well. I think it's just too late for some of the people, perhaps, but there are still, there are so many people that are in favor of slowing people down permanently without using our precious resources. Sorry, I didn't even need to state my name. Lori Beddinger, 2292, Sandsbury Drive, Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, 20732. But I just wanted to come up and, you know, take the time to reiterate to all of you and thank you once again for everything that you've done and put it, that sign up there. It has slowed some people down that I've noticed, and with the police car in there too, and when we've seen that. I think some people were advising others that, no, there's not really anybody in that car, so people are still going shoom, shoom down Harrison. But it has helped a bit on Sandsbury Drive, which is where I live. So anyway, thank you again. That's really all I wanted to say, and just, and ask once again to please consider speed humps or something permanent, because I think it would go a long way for us, for a permanency for that, and we wouldn't have to worry about it in the future. So, thank you so much.
Good to see you again. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thanks for your kind words.
Thank you for your service.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
You can comment at your appropriate time. Not now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so very much. Have a great evening and a great upcoming meeting.
Thank you. Okay, Council Lightning Round. I'll begin with Vice President Fink.
Stay cool, everyone. We're about to leap into a big heat wave. Get out and use some of the town amenities. I know we're struggling with the tennis courts, but there's other great things to do. Get out and use Kellum's Field. I want to echo something Councilman Morris said. I think 18 is, I think maybe we could consider 16 or older. I mean, these are kids out playing. That seems reasonable to me. If you're asking them to rent equipment or that there's an issue there, that might be a little different. But if a bunch of 16-year-olds show up with a football or baseball, seems folly to me that we wouldn't, that we would have an issue with that. And just to kind of prove that point, I'm going to go back to the public comment about the guys jumping off, or the kids jumping off the railing in Fish and Creek. And I think everyone knows, is aware of this. You don't need to be over 18 and get into Kellum's Field to jump off that bridge. And none of those kids were 18, and none of them... And none of those kids were 18 and none of them were well behaved. So, hey, get on a kayak or paddleboard, paddle up Fishing Creek. That's a lot better than, than jumping off that bridge. That's really it. Happy summer and see everyone at Third Friday.
Well, I could that. Again, Summer Night Festival tomorrow, six to nine at Kelms. Hope to see everyone there. And hopefully everyone's aware, our fireworks are coming up scheduled for July 3rd. So make sure you got that on your calendar. Wednesday, July 3rd at dusk. Thank you very well. Mr. Morris?
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment. I've always encouraged people to speak in public. It's a powerful thing. Just coming out and hearing your voice. But when people can't make the meetings, I always encourage them, just send an email. You know, that, that helps a lot too. Yeah, the fireworks on July 3rd. What's rain date for that? Okay, so the rain date for our town fireworks will be the 8th, that Saturday. So hopefully we've got good weather on the 3rd. Solomon's.
Who's in charge of the weather?
I got it, man. I got it.
Going to put that in a short timer's hands. Solomon's got their fireworks out on the 4th.
Arlington Harbor's the 3rd.
Harbor's the 3rd as well? At the same time there, huh? It'd be great to be on a boat. The summer nights, again, something we're trying out new. That'll be interesting. I'll be down there tomorrow night. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here, those of you who did come out. I just want to wish everybody a happy summer solstice and stay safe.
Dog sitting thing must be a daughter. Because I had to cat sit for my son. I just want to say, you know, with the, think of a little bit more about the recycle bin that we could advertise a little bit when the time comes for those who have town-owned bins or town, how to identify a bin that's owned by the town and to say, you know, contact us to collect them so that we can do that. Because if we don't make like six or 17 announcements on this, it won't be seen. But another thought is, maybe we can also think of some ideas about what to do if you have a recycle bin that you did buy yourself. Because most people don't need those sitting around. And it's unfortunate to take a giant plastic thing like that and just, you know, chuck it in the garbage. So maybe also we could think about, well, what can we do? Is there any place we could take them? If we collect those along with the town ones to get credits for it, can we collect those and do something else with them? That's all. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Have a great weekend.
One last thing?
Yeah.
Just so everyone's aware, tomorrow night, full moon, the strawberry full moon, is what it's called when it comes up in June. So tomorrow night, full moon, while, you, you can enjoy it while you're at the summer festival tomorrow night.
Buying the strawberry deckeries? Your motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
And the eyes have it. Good night, everybody.